Good evening. I declare that a quorum of at least 50 registered voters is present and I call the meeting to order. You too. I invite those of you who wish to do so to please stand and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Good evening, my name is Roger Brunel, I am the town moderator. For newcomers and those of you like me who have short memories, let me explain the rules we will follow to conduct our business at this meeting. No one may speak unless I have called upon them. If you do wish to speak, please raise your hand and wait until I have called upon you. If more than one person raises their hand at the same time, the first person I call on should come forward to the microphone here in front, and anyone else who wants to speak can also come forward and stand six feet apart, like we used to do. Once you are at the microphone, please identify yourself by name and where you live in Paxton. Or, if not Paxton. Ordinarily, I will not allow someone to speak more than once on an issue, and I may place limits on how long someone may speak on a topic. If there are times when any of you wishes to address a question to another speaker or to one of our officials, you must do so through me, and then I will call on the appropriate person to respond. I will allow persons who are not registered voters to speak, but please remember that only registered voters may make motions, second motions, or vote on motions. Please don't be afraid to ask questions if you don't understand something. Please speak your mind freely, but remember that we can disagree without being disagreeable. Please listen respectfully when other people are speaking. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent unless you are a first responder. I invite anyone who intends to make a motion concerning one of the articles to please come up here on the stage and read the motion from here so that everyone can hear you clearly. When we vote, I will call for the yays and nays. If the result is obvious, I will announce the result of the vote based on my observation of what I hear. If the vote is close, I will ask you to hold up the voter cards you were given when you registered, and again, if the result is obvious, I will announce the result based on what I see. If the vote appears to me to be close, I will ask the tellers to count the votes. This is the annual town meeting of the town of Paxton for 2024. The return of the warrant for the annual town meeting shows that it has been properly posted. As the first item of business, I request that the town meeting adopt a rule of this annual town meeting to provide that any motion requiring a two-thirds favorable vote by statute or otherwise shall be determined and declared by the town moderator and account shall not be taken unless requested by the town moderator or requested by seven or more voters in attendance. All those in favor of adopting this rule, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare the rule has been adopted, and the town clerk shall maintain a record of this action concerning the meeting. All right. We're beginning the articles, Article One, which involves revolving fund bylaw. Is there a motion under Article One? Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to amend the current departmental revolving funds bylaw with the revision shown on the amended departmental revolving funds bylaw, Section Five, Table, attached to the warrant.
Thank you, is there a second? Oh, come on. Thank you. Okay, recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is there any discussion? Our rate this vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare the motion is passed. Article Two, regards the council on aging bylaw. Ms. Fenton, would you come forward, please?
Good evening, everyone. I move that the town vote to replace the current council on aging bylaw in its entirety with the amended council on aging bylaw as attached to the warrant. Is there a second?
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, the recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare this is passed. Anyone else would like a physical copy of the warrant? I'm sorry, I ran out. Okay, we are showing it on the screen, I know it can be a little bit hard to see depending on where you're sitting. All right, let's move on. Article Three concerns a recreation commission bylaw change. It's my understanding that the recreation commission does not wish to proceed with the motion at this meeting, but if there's anyone that wants to make a motion, let the record show that there was no motion made under Article Three. Article Four is regarding accepting state funds for highway repairs. Is there a motion under Article Four? Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to accept any funds to be allocated by the Commonwealth under authorization of Chapter 90 of the Massachusetts General Laws pertaining to highway funds, to authorize the select board to enter into contracts for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of town roads, and to authorize the town treasurer to borrow in anticipation of receipt of said funds, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Director of Public Works.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. The recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is there any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare that this motion has passed. Next article has to do with repurposing some funds we have on hand. Is there a motion under Article Five? Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to repurpose the remaining funds of $15,000 previously appropriated by Article Five of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of information technology improvements.
Thank you, is there a second? There's a second, thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is there any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare that motion has passed. Brings us to Article Six, which regards revolving funds. Is there a motion under Article Six? Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to set the annual expenditure limits for fiscal year 2025 for all revolving funds established under the town of Paxton's general bylaws in the following amounts: council on aging, $2,000; recreation, $250,000; Paxton Days, $5,000; town rentals and leases, $4,000; planning board, $20,000; library, $500.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Baggdus, please come forward, yeah?
I just, I would like an explanation as to why the recreation fund is, or the request is so high compared to the others in the revolving amounts, I mean, 2,000, 5,000, 4, 20,000, and 500, but 250, so if I can just get a clarification? Thank you. Oh, you didn't hear the question?
The question was...
My question was, I wanted to know why the 250 was so high on, under recreation. Everything else seems to be moderate, and this seems to be excessive.
Okay, who can answer that question? Those of you who don't know, this is our town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, town administrator. So, the 250 for the recreation revolving fund. So, the program over the past couple of years has expanded, it used to just be, you know, basketball and some of the other smaller recreation programs, but then they picked up before and after school program and the summer camp program. In the past couple of years, we noticed that we had a lot of people attending those programs, so the amount of funds coming into the recreation department and then going out to pay for the cost of those had increased. Last year, we ran into an issue where we actually didn't have enough money that was previously approved at town meeting for the expenditure for that department, and there were bills that came in, such as payroll and so forth. So, we actually ended up increasing the amount through master and laws provisions, the Fincom Select Board, towards the end of the year. So, moving into this year, we just want to make sure we have enough. For those who have the information sheet, so it was that five-page sheet handout, it actually has a history, or not a history, a current balance of the starting numbers for the revolving funds, the amount revenue coming in, the expenses going out, and the total balance. So, right now, it's still a lower number because our summer camp hasn't picked up, and that's one of the biggest programs. Once that picks up, we have all the payroll and so forth. So, the 250, again, when town meeting is voting on it, they're just voting on the amount that is the maximum that department can expend out of that account, not what they can bring in, but what they can expend. So, in this case, the 250 generally covers their regular expenses for those programs, as well as their payroll and a few free programs they do throughout the year.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? Ready to vote? Okay, this requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare that that motion has passed. Article Seven regards transferring some free cash for a police cruiser. Is there a motion under Article Seven? Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to transfer $9,200 from certified free cash for the outfitting of the new cruiser provided by Anna Maria College, including all related expenses.
Is there a second? Thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Any discussion? This motion requires a simple majority, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare this motion is passed. Article Eight involves transferring some free cash for opioid funds. Is there a motion under Article Eight? Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $5,089.46 from free cash to the opioid settlement special revenue fund.
Thank you, is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, is there any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare, I declare this motion is passed. Okay, Article Eight involves receipt, transfer of some funds, and Chief Pinge Torrey, please Those of you who might not know, this is our fire chief, Chief Pinge Torrey.
Good evening. A lot of you here tonight, thank you for coming. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $61,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation fund to purchase a cardiac monitor and Lucas device for the ambulances for the Paxton Fire Department, including all related expenses.
Thank you, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval. And recommendation of the capital improvements planning committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, thank you, Mr. Love. And is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, thank you, this requires a simple majority, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I declare that this motion is passed, thank you, chief. Zipping right along here, maybe I'll see the face off in the Bruins game, who knows? Okay, Article Ten, this regards the water enterprise, is Mr. Jenkins present with us?
And by the way, for those of you like me who were affected by the water outage yesterday, I want to just express our gratitude for how quickly the water department and the public works department responded and got the water back for us.
Rodney Jenkins, 140 Davis Hill Road, Water Commissioner. I move that town raise and appropriate through water department receipts, water fees or water charges, the following sums to operate the water enterprise. Compensation, $254,925. Expense, $874,047. Debt, $96,619. For a total of $1,225,591. And that $1,225,591 is raised from department receipts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
And approval, recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, is there any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare that that motion is passed. Now we have Article Eleven, which involves water tank maintenance, Mr. Jenkins.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from retained earnings of the water enterprise fund, the sum of $20,681, to pay for inspection, maintenance, repair, or modification of the Asnapumsket Road water storage tank in accordance with the sixth year of the existing contract with Veolia, formerly known as Suez Advanced Solutions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, the recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval. This vote requires a simple, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare that motion is passed. Okay, now we're up to Article Twelve, appropriating funds for road improvement, Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $121,841 to the road improvement capital stabilization fund.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, the recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, is there any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare that motion is passed. Now Article Thirteen involves using the funds that we just voted to appropriate, Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $121,841 from the road improvement capital stabilization fund for the purpose of resurfacing roads.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
And recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is there any discussion? This motion requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare this motion is passed. Brings us to Article Fourteen, the Wachusett-Greenways article, Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,100 to be used for the expenses for Wachusett-Greenways and Eight Town Collaborative, said funds to be administered and expended by Wachusett-Greenways.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is for approval, is there any discussion? Right on the microphone, tell us who you are and where you live.
I'm at South Brook Road, I was just wondering, like, Wachusett-Greenway.
Okay, who can answer that question? Okay, once again, Ms. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, town administrator. So, the Greenways is, as it says in the article, the Eight Town Collaborative, so everyone puts in together, works together, and I believe we're working on the real trail, is our contribution. Couple of years ago, it used to be $1,000 from each town, they upped it to $1,100 to try to get more done.
Thank you, any other discussion or questions? Yes, ma'am, please come right up.
Jenderson, 042 West Street, you said eight towns were all getting charged $1,100? Thank you.
The answer to that question was yes. Any other discussion or questions? Ready to vote? Okay, this requires a, did I get a recommendation? I forget. Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
All right. Any other discussion? Simple majority required for this vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I declare that vote has passed. All right, is Peter Scher with us tonight? He's not, right? Do you want to make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, now we're talking about the Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical High School budget, and before I call Ms. Pinge Torrey to make a motion, I'd like to acknowledge, for those of you who might not know it, Bob Willby, who was one of our school committee members for the Bay Path, passed away this past year, and he was dedicated to the vocational school and did, did a lot for us, so we'll miss Bob. Ms. Pinge Torrey.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $595,009 to pay its assessed share of the Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical High School budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Recommendation of the finance committee?
Approval.
Is there any discussion? This vote requires a simple majority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare this vote has passed. Okay, this brings us to Article Sixteen, which is the Wachusett Regional School District budget, I'll call on Mr. Runstrom, who's one of our school committee members.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,786,547 to pay its assessed share of the Wachusett Regional School District budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024, and thereby approve the district's budget for said fiscal year.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Recommendation of the select board?
Approval.
Is for approval, recommendation of the finance committee?
Disapproval.
Is for disapproval, thank you. And I'm going to, before I open the floor to general questions, I'm going to call upon Michelle Grisay, who is the Director of Business and Finance for the school district, to make a presentation. Come right up here, ma'am.
Thank you very much for giving me your attention. I wanted to let you know that Superintendent Riley is sorry he couldn't make it here tonight, he's at Sterling Town Meeting. He did spend some time with some of the townspeople at some of the information sessions. I just wanted to start off with, our financial goals this year were to respond to, first of all, our state funding challenges, and secondly, we were very cognizant and we wanted to minimize the impact on towns because of the state funding, and we also needed to protect our essential services. So, the state determines what each town chair of the WRSD budget will be, and that continues to rise. In addition to that, it was exacerbated by our state funding status. The state determines how much our foundation budget will be, there's two pieces of that, minimum local contribution, that continues to rise for each of the towns, and how much they're going to give us in Chapter Seventy funding. Last year, we got an increase of $3.4 million, a 10 and 1/2% increase. This increase, we got less than 1%, or 0.6%, or $202,000. That directly impacts on how the towns will get, how much the town assessments will be. Our overall budget increase is 4.97% this year, our total town assessment increase is 6.12%. The town of Paxton, the increase is 4.39%. You can see the impact on the next slide of what that's, the historical Chapter Seventy increases have been. So, when we dip down to that $202,000, that, that causes us to fund through what's called discretionary, or discretionary spending. So, the question came up, what that foundation budget versus actual spending is. 98% of Massachusetts schools exceed their foundation budgets. What the state is calculating, that each of those foundation budgets are, 98% go above that, we're being asked to try to stay at that. More than half the districts in Massachusetts exceed by 40%, actually, the state average is 46%. The Wachusett only overspends that foundation budget by 25.2%. And the next slide just shows a picture of that, that the Wachusett budget is 25% over, and you can see that our other regional average, 40% over, our state average, 46% over, and our Dart peers are 42% over. The next comparison we have is our per-people spending. The Wachusett Regional School District's average per-people spending is $17,413. Our Dart peer averages, the average spending is $19,910, and the state average is $21,116. WRSD ranks 287 out of the 308 school districts. We were also, there was some question as to whether or not we were overstaffed, so we did a little digging on what our staffing comparisons were. School district administrators, you can see Wachusett is in green, our Dart peers are the ones in gray, and the mass average is in the blue bar. So, we have school district administrators first, teachers second. You can see, we're a little below average compared to, but not terribly, terribly below. Par professionals, that was one where we were actually on par, with the exception of Shrewsbury being a little bit higher than we were. Student support staff is the next one. That's our, that is our administrators, I believe. And then our clerical staff, is the next slide. And then our technology staff. I just wanted to also say that this budget is a level servicing budget only, and it includes no additional staffing or no brand-new initiatives. It's basically what we did last year and taking into consideration what we have to do this year with, with changes in, in contracts and things like that.
All right, is, any discussion? Anybody want to ask questions or say anything? Mr. Baggdus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jane Baggdus, Greenham Road. I was concerned, or I'd like input from the finance committee as to why they're voting no.
Okay, Mr. Love, can you respond to that? This is Mark Love, the chairman of our finance committee.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we don't have any bar graphs to show you because it's not in our budget, so I'm going to direct everybody to the Warren Article booklet on page seven, which actually has, conveniently, has Bay Path School and Wachusett Regional School together. And if you're there, I can direct your attention to the Wachusett Regional School, Article Sixteen, and in the boxed-off area, you can see that, notwithstanding Michelle's presentation a minute ago, it comes down to, the school has four major buckets, and they happen to be minimum local contribution, which is essentially what the state mandates to the school to pass on to the member towns, debt service, transportation, and discretionary. If you'll allow me, even though we just voted approval, to go to the top of the page and look at Bay Path for just a minute, notwithstanding that the presentation is not exactly the same, it still had exactly the same four components, and I think it's important to note that what you don't see in Bay Path is that there was no discretionary. is that there was no discretionary increase passed on to the town of Paxton. The only increase that you do see, other than a moderate $1,500 for debt, the rest of it was simply passed on to us because the state mandated that it be passed on to us. Contrary to that, if you look at Wachusett Regional's presentation and you look at the line item for discretionary, you'll note that a year ago, it was $1,781, and pardon me for rounding. And this year, it's $2,805. It's an increase of $305,000. But percentage-wise, it's an increase of 17.11%. Not 0% like Bay Path, not 2.5%, which we're restricted to, but 17.11%. And the Finance Committee found that that was unaffordable to the town. It was too high. And the discretionary line is exactly that. Again, notwithstanding what Michelle just said, these are the items, this is the line over which the school committee and the school has discretionary choice to make. And their choice was to pass it on to the town of Paxton, which I would submit to you adds to our deficit, adds to our override, two items that we're going to talk about in a minute. And we voted no, and we didn't stand alone. There are other town finance committees that have voted no as well. Not to mention that the school superintendent is at the town of Sterling right now because their finance committee voted no. It's unaffordable to us, it's unsustainable to us. And the last item I would point out is that the overall increase of the budget at the bottom of $7,455 compared to $7,786 is $330,000. Our 2.5, Proposition 2.5 allows us to increase only $292,000. So our entire Proposition 2.5 override has gone to subsidize the school. That's not affordable to us, that's not sustainable to us. And that's why we voted no.
Do you have any other questions or any announcements to speak? Yes, I would like to make my comments. Tell us who you are and where you live, please.
Mike Runney, 18 Lincoln Circle. Just questioning the math. We voted Bay Path a 90% increase. And now we're saying that a 4.4% increase at Wachusett. Good? So if we're voting for education in total, should we take a total vote? And say, hey, Matt, you're going to go back to the left, too?
Do you want to respond to that?
Regarding the math, what I did say was the entire increase dollar-wise was the only amount that was mandated by them, by the state, under local minimum contribution to be passed to us. So the fact that the math, as you just worked it out, is what it is. It's what the state mandated to us. What Wachusett Regional has done is they've passed on the local minimum contribution plus 17.11% of discretionary. And that's why we voted against it.
Ms. Grisay again.
We did have a slide because we were asked to compare Bay Path, and we didn't really want to do that. The state does tell us how we're going to fund. The state for vocational education... For vocational education, they give you more money because it costs more money to educate somebody at a vocational school. So their foundation budget is set at $20,659 per pupil. Whereas the foundation budget for the regional school district is only set at $12,704 per pupil. Okay? So their overall proposed budget, they're going to pay, you're going to be paying $23,469 per pupil. With Wachusett, our overall budget is $18,036. When we're preparing our budget, we don't look at it as discretionary spending. That's a plug number. Because how your assessments are derived is by the total overall budget. So why we have higher discretionary spending is because we didn't get that state funding this year. The formula for state funding threw us into a situation called "hold harmless." And that's made our state funding stay level, except with a $30 per pupil increase. So we didn't say, oh, we're going to just randomly spend more money. We had to spend more money in order to educate our students. We're not asking for anything more in this budget as far as students or teachers or staffing or anything extraordinary because we didn't get that additional funding from the state. And I don't know if you caught, but 90, the foundation budget is, every district overspends it. 98% of districts. The districts that don't overspend their foundation budget are the inner-city districts and vocational districts. Every other school district is overspending by 46%. I have an average, 46% or more. We're at 25%.
Yeah, okay. Come. Tell us who you are and where you live, please. I should be on.
Jen Desenzos, 42 West Street. I have a couple of questions. Is there increased enrollment? Also, what are we exactly spending our discretionary fund on? It's the overall budget.
It's the whole overall budget. It's not like we're saying we're just spending it on this. What's discretionary, what's not discretionary is the state tells you how much we have to spend. That's the foundation budget. And then you have to, the towns, as part of their assessment, have to pay that as a minimum, plus transportation, plus any debt service. So anything above that to cover your budget is called discretionary. It's not a particular, it's everything. The second question was about increased enrollment. We had a slight decrease in enrollment this year, less than a percent. I think it was 0.08 of a percent. As far as the foundation budget calculation was concerned. And in addition to that, the reason why that foundation, why we didn't get the Chapter 70 funding was, there was also a change in how they calculated the inflation rate. So the inflation rate was brought down to 1.5% or something like that, a very small inflation rate. And in the previous years, they were doing 4.5% as a cap, even though the inflation rate was far greater than that. So that's what drove us into that "hold harmless" where we didn't get the additional Chapter 70 funding. Which, again, goes right back to, it goes right to the town assessments.
All right. Anybody else have a question or a comment? Yes, sir. Come right up in, you'll be next, ma'am.
Bob Ferguson, Brigham Road, 38 Brigham Road. And I just, I would like to hear what the consequences would be either way, perhaps from both of you, of not passing this motion.
Okay. The question is, if you didn't hear it, what would be the consequences either way of not passing this motion? Would like to address that. Do you want to say something? Mark, do you want to say something? What would be the consequences if this, if this motion fails? That's the question.
If this motion fails this evening in another town, of which there are four others, one is voting this evening and three others voting at the end of the month, if it fails this evening and one other town votes to disapprove, then it will go back to the Wachusett Regional School District to improve the budget and submit a lower amount for approval. And that's our hope, and that's our goal. That is, that's the Finance Committee's hope and goal.
All right. Anyone else have a question or a comment? Yes, sir. Come right up. Oh, I'm sorry. I promised you.
I have my question.
Go ahead. Can we raise that a little bit? I think, I think, go ahead. Knock yourself out.
Chuck, Tulare Road. I just wanted to make a moment to acknowledge our school committee members because I know it is a thankless job, and I know they put a lot of work into these budgets, which is Carl, Carl Atmar and Scott, who I believe is the Chair of the entire school committee. And I know they're along with the school district, too. People here in the back? And I know they put a lot of work into the budget. And if the school district and the school committee is saying this is what they need to educate our children, as a Wachusett parent, I'm pretty happy with the education my kids are receiving in district. And I would hate to see that impacted. So I'm speaking in support of the budget as presented by our school committee in district. I hope that we can fund that. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, go ahead.
Hi. Justin Davis Hill Road. I want to follow up on Chuck's comments and also speak in support of the budget. So if I understand correctly, this is not really an issue of the school district passing on cost to us. This is an issue of the state underfunding the foundation budget, which is putting a lot of school districts in a similar position, right? So if I'm understanding this correctly, this budget is not seeking anything crazy. It's seeking to just hang on and maintain what we have right now. At the end, I have a question. Is there a possibility, working with our state delegation, that we can still see an increase in that foundation budget to possibly backfill some of this? But that being said, if you look at the increase, Paxton of all of the five towns has the smallest percentage increase. Again, just maintaining services, which are once cut, so much harder to add back in, right? So this is kind of a temporary budget crunch. I'd hate to see us make decisions that have ripple effects for years for our kids in the schools when there's a possibility of this still being straightened out.
Just put the microphone right on the desk. Thank you. All right. I'm calling Mr. Runstrom to speak now.
Hello. Scott Runstrom, 29 Camp Street. I am the Chair of the Wachusett Regional School Committee for... Yeah, all right. I'll speak into the microphone. Hi, Scott Runstrom, 29 Camp Street. I'm the Chair of the Wachusett Regional School Committee for about another three weeks. And then I won't be for at least a year after that. But in any case, I'm not going to tell you that it doesn't cost a lot to educate our students because it does. This is a lot of money, right? We have to admit that. But it costs a lot of money to run our school systems. We run 12 schools throughout the district. We employ over 1,000 people. We educate all the students in this district. And I can assure you that the administration we have this year has done everything in their power to keep this budget as low as possible. I don't know if you heard it, but Michelle said this is a level services budget. It is adding no people this year. There are essentially no new expenses in this budget that weren't in last year's budget. It's just that things are more expensive. And even on the salary side, this administration, along with the school committee, has done everything it can to control expenses on salaries. We negotiated a 2% increase with our teachers last year. It was 2% for the first year, 2.5% for the two additional years. Like, I can't imagine negotiating a union contract for less than that amount, honestly. The teachers really did us a service by taking that amount of money. But everything is more expensive. That's what this is coming down to. The two biggest expenses that are increasing this budget, our transportation, because our transportation contracts have gone up because it costs more to transport our students, and out-of-district special education tuitions, which is another thing that we have very little control over. But like I said, everything's up. I looked it up. Over the last three years, the inflation rate is almost 6%. We're all feeling that, right? It's the same thing that's going on with the town budget. The reason that we're in the situation that we're in is expenses over the last three years have gone up 6% per year. And we're stuck with a Proposition 2.5 that only lets us raise taxes by 2.5%. I understand that none of us like paying taxes, but if we want the same level of services that we've had over the past years, we need to fund it because everything is more expensive. One last percentage, I looked at, you know, not this, not just this year, but over the last three years, the way the school budget's gone. In FY '22, the budget was $7.1 million. This year, it's $7.7 million. Yes, that's a lot of money. It's $630,000. But it's only an average of 2.9% over that three years. So as inflation has been going up 6% per year, our assessment for the district is only going up 2.9%. I think that's reasonable, and I ask you to please fund this budget.
Is there anyone that would like to address the question about whether we could ask our state representatives to increase school funding?
Yes. So as for the question of whether we can ask the state legislature to fund more, that there are active, activity going on at the state level to ask for more resources. And I believe in the latest House budget, there is actually a little bit more money. That's not built into this budget because it won't be official until it goes to the Senate and the Congress Committee and then the Governor finds a sense of budget. But we are hopeful that it will be able to hold. That we may get about $0.5 million district-wide in terms of state budget. That's not guaranteed until the Governor finds a sense of budget, but we're hopeful that that may happen.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And if there's one saying anything? This vote requires a simple majority. Thank you. It's okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Because this is an important question, I'm going to ask you to, if you're voting yes, hold up your card and stand up. Stand up. This is the yes vote. Thank you. Please sit down. Now, I'm calling on the no votes. Please stand up and hold up your card. Okay. I declare the motion is passed. All right. Now, we've reached the town budget. And before we open the floor to motions on the town budget, I want to explain what's going to happen. So if you look at the warrant, there were two articles in the warrant, Article 17 and 18. And the original thought was to try to actually pass both of them because the first one is contingent on an override election, which is next Monday, by the way, a week from today. And the thought was, if the override election failed, then the second article, which is Article 18, would automatically come into place or take effect, I should say. We've been told by the state, you can't do that. You can only have one budget voted at the meeting. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to have a motion under Article 17, which is the budget that requires an override. And we'll see what happens. If that passes, then we're done. If it doesn't pass, then we could move on to Article 18, which is an alternative budget if somebody wants to move there. So we'll start by opening the floor to a motion under Article 17. Ms. Pinditari.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,474,677 and to further appropriate, from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations account, the sum of $300,000. And to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $1,440,000 for a total appropriation of $8,214,677. And that these sums be expended to defray the necessary and usual expenses of the several departments of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024. on July 1, 2024, and especially for any and all items shown in the budget attached to the warrant for Article 17, provided that such appropriation shall be contingent upon the passage of a Proposition 2.5 ballot question under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. The recommendation of the Select Board.
Approval.
Is for approval. The recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Disapproval.
Is for disapproval. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Jen Desenzos, 42 West. You said disapproval. Can you explain that?
Mr. Love. So hold on, we're going to put up a visual aid.
The reason that the Finance Committee disapproves, we actually have a number, a different number in mind, and as you can see right here on the screen, there's been eight override options that the Finance Committee has deliberated over for nearly two months. And you can see by designation that item number six is the one recommended by the Select Board, which is in the warrant article that's just been read. The Finance Committee recommends item number three, which is at $1,150,000. And you want to keep in mind that the budget that we're trying to have the override cover is item number one. Our budget deficit that we face right now is $840,000. And the Finance Committee felt that the leap all the way down to $1,440,000 was too much of a leap, keeping in mind that, as evidenced by the screen behind me, shows an increase just for that override of $845, which in itself is 11.45% increase. That does not include Proposition 2.5 increase that you'll see in addition to this, so if you add 2.5% to the 11.45%, you're looking at a 13.95%, nearly a 14% increase. The Finance Committee felt that that was too expensive. We were mindful of a lower amount, we were mindful of those of the middle-income category, low-income, fixed income, and we wanted something that would accommodate those particular income levels, be more affordable, as you can see up here at $675,000, still cover the deficit of 840, put some money in capital depreciation, which is woefully underfunded right now at only $36,000, put more money in the stabilization fund to replenish and repay it for the $100,000 that we took out a year ago to avert an override. And it's important to note, because I think there may be some misinformation, the one that we're proposing includes no cuts in service, no elimination of service, no reduction of service, no budget cuts, none of that. And because it doesn't include any of that, and because it sets some money aside, and because it covers the deficit, we felt the more affordable one is $1,150, and that's why we voted against $1,440, and at some particular point, we'd like the $1,150 to be taken under consideration. But that was our reason for opposing the warrant as proposed at $1,440.
Ms. Pinge Torre.
So you heard from Mark, the Chair of our Finance Committee, on his thought process around a lower number for an override. The reason that Select Board had recommended an override amount at the higher level of $1.44 million is very simple. Any number less than that contributes to a deficit for next year. So while our budget gap, I'm not going to use the word, I'm specifically not using the word deficit right now, and I'll tell you why in a minute. Our budget gap is $840,000, right? That is after we have applied a full $500,000 in free cash to the budget. I'll tell you that the Division of Local Services recommends against applying free cash to balance your budget. The reason for that is free cash is considered a non-recurring revenue source, which means that you can't rely on it from year to year. So if you have revenue, or you have expenses that are annual, salaries, benefits, things like that, and you start relying on revenue sources that are not guaranteed year to year, then there's going to be a year, like this year, where you don't have enough money to fund that. And so that's considered a poor budgeting practice. The reason I'm not using the word deficit to describe the $840,000 budget gap is because that's not truly the deficit. The deficit is $1,340,000, which is that $840,000 number, plus the free cash that we have added to the budget in order to try to balance it. The reason why we are recommending a $1.44 is because we have that $840,000 plus the free cash, plus the Finance Committee had recommended rolling back usage of our ambulance receipts reserved account to our typical level, which is what we usually apply at town meeting, of roughly $300,000. That's where you get the $1.44 number from. Any amount that continues to apply free cash to the budget creates a structural deficit for next year. Why would we recommend an override if we're going to have to come back again next year and we're not actually balancing the budget for years to come?
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Love? I'm sorry, was it? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hi, Justin Newton, Davis Hill Road. Just a point of clarification, there is no motion before us to vote for the Finance Committee's lower override amount, is that correct? So our options are essentially the override that the Select Board recommends, or no override.
That's correct. At this time. I call on Mr. Love.
I guess I have two comments to make. One is that I'm not sure that, being a Finance Committee member for as long as I have, that I would agree with everything that was just said to support the $1,440. But I would say that the use of free cash, unfortunately, the town of Paxton has used it for 25 to 40 years. In recognizing that that was the wrong direction to go, the town of Paxton, the Select Board and the Finance Committee adopted financial management policies that call for the weaning away of the use of free cash, as directed by the Collins Group, who spearheaded a group to write those financial management policies, to do so over a 10-year period. The $1,150 is in compliance with that. The $1,440 is doing it all in one year. And if it was to be done all in one year to the benefit of the taxpayers, I think you'd find that the Finance Committee was much in favor of it. But it's being done in one year to increase the amount that's being passed on to the taxpayers, and that's why we favored our $1,150. It accomplishes covering the deficit, it accomplishes putting money away, it accommodates the financial management policies that we have in place, it hits all of those boxes, checks all of those marks. The $1,440 does not do that. So with that, I'd like to move to amend the pending motion by substituting the following motion. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,474,677, and to further appropriate from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations account the sum of $340,000, and from free cash, the sum of $250,000, and to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $1,150 for a total appropriation of $8,214,677, and that sums be expended to defray the necessary and usual expenses of the several departments of the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and especially for any and all items shown in the budget attached to the warrant for Article 17, provided that such appropriation shall be contingent upon the passage of a Proposition 2.5 ballot question under General Laws, Chapter 59, S21(c).
All right, so what's just happened is a motion to amend the original motion by substituting an entirely new motion. Is there a second to the motion to amend? All right. Motion's been made and seconded to amend the pending motion. Recommendation of the Select Board on that motion to amend?
Disapproval.
Could be disapproval. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Approval.
Could be approval. Okay. Now, at this point, the floor's open to discussion on the motion to amend. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sarah Ford, 299 Richards Ave, that's where I live. If we voted for the amended version, are we kicking the can down to next year? Do we just have to do this again next year?
Who would like to answer that? Ms. Pinge Torre.
The answer, Sarah, is yes. In all likelihood, what would happen next year is that we would end up with another budget gap, because essentially you are, if we approve the $1.15 number, you are still needing to apply half of the free cash that we currently have to the budget, which means that next year, because our budgets are so tight this year, we're not expecting to generate the same amount of free cash. And so next year, there's the distinct possibility that we're not going to have enough free cash in order to fill that hole that we've created this year.
Thank you. Mr. Love.
My answer to that question is $1,440 is no guarantee. The only guarantee would be about $2,500,000 or $3,000,000. And if you saw on the screen, we just thought that that was a deal breaker and a budget buster for the townspeople. So we were looking to keep the lowest amount possible, and just have us do our job diligently next year so that we don't have to come back next year, but there's no guarantee at $1,400 that that's going to be the case either. So I think that you ought to keep that in mind as well.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Runstrom.
Scott Runstrom, 29 Camp Street. It's just a technical question, really. I assume the ballots have been printed for the override next week? So if we change the number of the override, how does that work with the ballots that are currently printed?
That's a very good question. And Town Council informs me that we just have the vote, if it passes, that's fine, it just have, the town would have the excess capacity to increase its taxation to the limit beyond what would be approved if this amended motion is adopted. Okay? Anybody else? Yes, sir. Yeah?
I just wanted to ask, how many folks in here actually work for the town? All right. So when we start spending money, we're never going to get it back. So I have no problem coming back every year to follow up with the budget, just don't throw money away at it every year.
Anybody else would like to speak? Torre.
Dorie Urit, 79 South Street. My question is, what is the plan for free cash going forward? Like, I think 100 years ago, we proposed putting it into like stabilization and infrastructure bills and stuff like that, but I know that never got voted. So I just want to know, is there, what is our forward-looking plan for free cash?
Who can answer that? Mr. Love.
Thank you for that good question. It gives me a chance to reiterate. Our $1,150 calls for $250,000 of free cash, $150 to go to the capital depreciation fund, which currently only has $36,000 in it, dangerously low. Another $100,000 of free cash would go to stabilization to replenish it for money that we took from it a year ago to avert the override. If you'll allow me with all due respect, the $1,440 designates no use of free cash, which I think is a dangerous thing to leave at idle for free use, where the Finance Committee has designated its use.
Ms. Pinge Torre.
So it's not typical that we designate the use of our free cash at the time that, at this current juncture, right? And the reason for that is free cash still has to be certified, and that usually takes place over the next couple of months. What we, as a Select Board, have done in the past, and what I'd like to resurrect, is a new policy for what percentage of the free cash we would be able to then take and place it into each of our stabilization accounts versus spend on one-time expenditures. So Mark had referenced our financial management policies that we put into place a few years back. Financial management policies dictate that we should be getting off of free cash. Now, he did talk about a 10-year plan for that. I'd suggest to you that anything sooner than 10 years is only going to benefit the town, because then we're not waiting 10 years to be able to get that advantage of being able to use our free cash in other ways. So the ways that other towns tend to use their free cash are to supplement their reserves, but also to fund one-time expenditures, so things like capital needs. So if the DPW, for instance, needed a mower, that would be easy to fund out of the free cash balance. So that would give us that leverage to be able to be a little bit more liquid with how we obtain and spend our funding, and allow us to have cash on hand so that we don't have to borrow for as much, and saves the town money in the long term.
All right, Mr. Love, last shot. Wait a minute. The motion to move the question? Is there a second? That's not debatable. All right, so we're moving, we're ending debate, you're voting to end debate. Requires a 2/3 majority, all those in favor of ending debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I declare that motion to end debate is passed. Now, we are now going to vote on the motion to amend. If this motion passes, then we will vote on the motion itself as amended. Right now, we're just amending the motion, and I want to be sure you all understand, I will read it again. The motion is to amend the pending motion, which is the motion that Ms. Pinge Torre started out with under Article 17. To amend the pending motion by substituting the following motion. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,474,677, and to further appropriate from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations account the sum of $340,000, and from free cash, the sum of $250,000, and to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $1,150,000 for a total appropriation of $8,214,677, and that sums be expended to defray the necessary and usual expenses of the several departments of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024, and especially for any and all items shown in the budget attached to the warrant article for Article 17, provided that such appropriation shall be contingent upon the passage of a Proposition 2.5 ballot question under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). All those in favor of this motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I'm going to have a standing count. All those in favor, please stand and raise your cards. cards. Okay, please be seated. All those opposed, please stand and raise your card. We're going to have to count. It's close. Please be seated. The tellers, please come forward. All right, please be patient. We're going to have, we're going to have a standing count as soon as the tellers are ready. Ready? All right. If you're in favor of the motion to amend, as I just read it, please stand and hold your card up and remain standing until we tell you to sit down. Tell us if you've finished, please come forward and report to the town clerk. Did somebody call Mr. Love? Was Mr. Love counted? He's been counted. Okay. May I all sit down, please? All right. Now, if you're opposed to the motion to amend, please now stand and hold your cards up and remain standing. All right, please be seated. The motion is, to amend, is defeated. The vote was 68 in favor and 71 against. All right, we're now, okay, so, excuse me? Yes. 68 in favor, 71 against. So the motion... All right. So just so you know where we're at, that means the motion to amend has been defeated. We're now opening discussion, if any more discussion is needed, on the original motion, which Ms. Pinge Tori gave us quite a while ago now. All right, does anyone have any more comments or questions about the original motion? And I will read it again so you're sure what you're voting on. All right. This is the, this is the motion we're going to vote on now. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,474,677, and to further appropriate from the ambulance receipts reserved in appropriations account the sum of $300,000, and to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $1,440,000 for a total appropriation of $8,214,677, and that these sums be expended to defray the necessary and usual expenses of the several departments of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024, and especially for any and all items shown in the budget attached to the warrant for Article 17, provided that such appropriation shall be contingent upon the passage of a Proposition Two and a Half ballot question under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, we're going to have to count again. This is a close vote. So all those in favor of the motion, please stand up and hold your cards up. Please be seated. All right, now the persons, everyone opposed to the motion, please stand. Please be seated. The motion passes by a vote of 91 to 53. All right. In view of the fact that that motion is, so we've now adopted a budget for the town, therefore Article 18 is moot point. We've reached the end of our meeting. Before we leave, just wait, just wait. I want to remind you all that next Monday, a week from today, is the town election, which is election for offices and the override vote. And the polls are open from 10:00 a.m. to... 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the gymnasium, not here, in the gymnasium at the other end of the school. I also would ask anyone interested in a role seat on the Finance Committee, and you can see from Mr. Love how much fun that is, let me know. And that's part of my job is to appoint members of the Finance Committee, so I'd be happy to hear from you. All right, I will entertain, oh, return your, return your cards on the way out. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. Seconded. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I move, declare this meeting as dissolved. Have a good summer, everybody. Thank you for coming.